Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October Annual Meeting for the Town of Mashpee. I'd like everybody to rise and face the flag, pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic where we stand. One nation, under God. In the physical, in liberty, in justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. We are honored tonight to be, to have the Mashpee High School Band, conducted by Andrew Tryonis, and he is going to have the band play two songs for us. Thank you very much, that was the Mashpee High School Band. While we have a minute, I'd like to announce that the book swap that you saw as you walked in will still be open after the town meeting is over, so you can go out and read about In addition, even though the Red Sox aren't playing, I'm going to pretend they are, and I'll give you periodic scores. And you better believe they'll be beating the Yankees every time I mention it. All right. To the constables of the town, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and summon the inhabitants of the Town of Mashpee, who are qualified to vote in the elections to meet Mashpee High School on Monday, the 19th of October, 2009, at 7:00 PM, for the following purposes: to act on the articles contained in the following warrant. Article 1: See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from available funds eighteen dollars and eighty-two cents to pay previous fiscal year unpaid bills as follows: medical affiliates of Cape Cod, 1882, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Myers.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the hotel/motel reserved receipts account, eighteen dollars and eighty-two cents, to the department unpaid bill account, with said funds to be distributed by the town accountant.
Second.
Motion made in seconded Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval by a vote of six to zero.
And as we always do, for you new timers, anybody who wants to talk, please just go to the microphone. For the record, it's important, you give your name and your address, and you will be recognized. Any discussion on Article 1? Eighteen dollars and eighty-two cents, okay. I need a four-fifths vote, let's try to get unanimous. All those in favor of Article 1 say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 2: To see if the town will vote to reduce the fiscal year 2010 operating budget in the amount of three hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars, with said reductions to the expense accounts of the following departments in the amounts as stated. School Department budget, ninety thousand, five fifty-seven. Police salary/wage, one hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty. Conservation salary/wage, twenty-two thousand, six eighty-one. Human Resources salary/wage, twenty-nine, nine sixty-one. Town Insurance expense, twenty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. Legal Engineering Consulting expense, fifteen thousand. Transfer Station expense, eighteen thousand, four eighty-five, or take any other action related there, too. Mrs. Cook.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to reduce the FY 2010 operating budget in the amount of three hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars, with said reductions to be distributed between the expense accounts of the following departments in the amounts as stated. School Department budget, ninety thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Police salary/wage, one hundred and eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. Conservation salary/wage, twenty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty-one dollars. Human Resources salary/wage, twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. Town Insurance expense, twenty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars. Legal Engineering Consulting expense, fifteen thousand dollars. Transfer Station expense, eighteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Second. Motion made in seconded Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee emphasizes that the cuts have been made by the state already, and we're recommending approval by a vote of six to zero, due to the requirement of the town to have a balanced budget.
Okay, motion been made, Finance Committee agrees. Any discussion on Article 2 is moved. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 2 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 3: See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer eight thousand dollars from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account to the Fire and Rescue Department fiscal year 2010 expense account, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Cahalan.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer eight thousand dollars from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account to the Fire and Rescue Department FY 2010 expense account.
Second.
Motion made in seconded Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article 3? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 3 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 4: See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account to the Fire and Rescue Department fiscal year 2010 expense account, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account to the Fire and Rescue Department FY 2010 expense account.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval by a vote of five to one.
Any discussion on Article 4? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 4 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 5: See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer one hundred thousand dollars from the Waterways Improvement Fund account to the Waterways Channel Permit expense account, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Richardson.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer one hundred thousand dollars from the Waterways Improvement Fund account to the Waterways Channel Permit expense account.
Second.
Motion made in seconded Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee actually retook the vote today, because we had a little bit more information, so I'd like to explain. The Finance Committee does recommend approval by a vote of four, with two opposed and one abstention. The approval is due to the fact that the contained expense funding is from existing fees. The abstention was from the lack of information, and the opposition votes were because, one, undetermined sources of future expense funding, and the second was the structure of the existing funding from the mooring holders does not represent all voters, so it's a recommending approval.
Okay. Article 5, any discussion on Article 5 is moved. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 5 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes. Article 6: To see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law Chapter 44B, Section 6, to reserve from the fiscal year 2010 estimated community preservation revenue, the following amounts: one hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-three cents, ten percent of open space purposes; one hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight fifty-three, sixty-three, ten percent for historic purposes; one hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight fifty-three, sixty-three, ten percent for affordable community housing purposes; nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-eight cents to the fiscal year 2010 Community Preservation Fund budgeted reserve, as recommended by the Community Preservation Act Committee, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Myers.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law Chapter 44B, Section 6, to reserve from the FY 2010 estimated community preservation revenues: one hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-three cents for open space purposes; one hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-three cents for historic resource purposes; one hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-three cents for affordable community housing purposes; and nine hundred and thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars and thirty-eight cents to the FY 2010 Community Preservation Fund budgeted reserve.
Second.
Motion made in seconded Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval by a vote of six to zero.
Article 6, any discussion on Article 6 is moved. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 6 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Article 7: See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Fund, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law Chapter 44B, Section 5, thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars for the purpose of funding the preservation of vital records, including necessary costs and expenses related there, too, as recommended by the Community Preservation Act Committee, or take any other action related there, too. Mrs. Cook.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Fund Historic Reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law Chapter 44B, Section 5, thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars for the purpose of funding the preservation of vital records, including necessary costs and expenses relating there, too, as recommended by the Community Preservation Act Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made in seconded Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article 7? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 7 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 8: See if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Fund, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law Chapter 44B, Section 5, twenty-four thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the expansion of the Mashpee Community Garden, including necessary costs and expenses related there, too, as recommended by the Community Preservation Act Committee, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Cahalan.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Fund budgeted reserve for appropriation in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law's Chapter 44B, Section 5, twenty-four thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the expansion of the Mashpee Community Garden, including necessary costs and expenses related there, too, as recommended by the Community Preservation Act Committee.
Second.
Motion made in seconded Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval by a vote of six to zero.
Finance recommends approval. Any discussion on Article 8? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 8 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Now, town clerk has given me the score, it's two to one in the third inning. Two hundred and thirty-nine people are here tonight to vote. Article 9: See if the town will vote to amend Article 7, Board of Sewer Commissioners, Section 3-25, membership terms, by deleting the first sentence and replacing it with the following: "The Board of Sewer Commissioners shall consist of seven voters of the town appointed by the Board of Selectmen, one member to be designated respectfully by the Finance Committee, Board of Health, Board of Selectmen, and Mashpee Water District, and three members to serve as, quote, 'at-large appointees,' or take any other action related there, too." Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend Article 7, Board of Sewer Commissioners, Chapter 3-25, membership terms, by deleting the first sentence and replacing it with the following: "The Board of Sewer Commissioners shall consist of seven voters of the town appointed by the Board of Selectmen, one member to be designated respectively by the Finance Committee, Board of Health, Board of Selectmen, and Mashpee Water District, and three members to serve as at-large appointees."
Second.
Motion made in seconded Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article 9? Yes, sir. Welcome. You're the first.
Hi, Peter White from Seventy-Two Main Street. I'd like to offer an amendment to Article 9, to read as follows: "The Board of Sewer Commissioners shall consist of seven voters of the town, quote, 'six elected every three years, one from each of the six precincts, and one appointed by the selectmen,' unquote."
That's against the charter.
Yeah, I think, I'm hearing rumblings, but my memory is it's against the charter.
That's a motion, yes.
Well, it's against the charter, so I can't accept it.
Well, isn't the water commissioners elected?
No.
Dare not.
Not yet.
What did you say?
It's changed by the charter.
Water District is a separate agency under, not under the charter.
Right, well, ultimately, we'll have a sewer commission, that'll be something.
Well, I mean, if the charter's voted by the town, the Water District is separate, not covered by the charter.
So, we can't elect our sewer commissioners?
No.
Not without, I believe, an amendment to the charter.
Right.
And they're concurring with me.
Okay, well, I'd like to change my amendment, then, and re-quote. I have a backup. "The Board of Sewer Commissioners shall consist of seven voters of the town, one each from, one appointed from each of the six precincts, and one appointed at-large by the selectmen." That's a motion.
We have five precincts, so...
Town clerk told, office told me six. Okay, five precincts, then.
All right, one appointed for each of the five precincts. What about the other two?
And then the other two appointed by the selectmen. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. So, the amendment is that we're still electing seven, one from each of the five residential precincts.
Pointing.
Pointing, I'm sorry, and two appointed by the selectmen. Is that correct?
Pardon me?
We're going to appoint one for, under your motion, you want to have one member appointed from each of the residential precincts.
Yes.
The remaining two appointed by the selectmen.
Yes.
And we have a second. Discussion on the amendment. Mr. Cahalan.
In anticipation, and there might be some questions about this, I did a summary of the notes I took from our subcommittee meeting. These are not official minutes, these are just notes to myself. The main focus of Sewer Commission has been to study nitrogen removal, to save our estuaries from a total destruction. This study has been in the process of being prepared for almost a decade now. Being close to completion, we as a town have to make some major decisions, with its costs that have been estimated to be possibly a half a billion dollars or more. To deal with this, the Board of Selectmen created a subcommittee to look into the finances of it. When that committee met, it was decided that there are so many aspects of the problem, it would be beneficial to expand the Sewer Commission to cover the additional things that should be considered before presenting this major expense to the town. These commission members that are recommended would have the advantage of reporting directly back to their committee and boards, so they would be up to date on what would be eventually brought to the town as a final plan. The member from the Finance Committee, this is without a doubt the most costly project the town will ever undertake, questions of how to tax will be paramount, and has already been questioned in other towns. The question of residents' financial liability, who will pay and how much they will pay, will be a very serious issue. That's why we wanted a Finance Committee. Board of Health, even though our efforts and studies have involved nitrogen reduction, health concerns will be very much a part to be considered in our final sewer plan. The Board of Selectmen, the selectmen being the town policy-making component of our charter, any final plan would have to be endorsed by them. Mashpee Water District, which is not part of the town, there is a clear possibility having a combined water and sewer district could have a very large cost savings, and the very least, the town might want to contract the Water District for some of the services to avoid duplicating of cost. And the residents, they should be aware of what is being considered, that was the water. That was the thinking behind this whole new sewer commission. The present members have been working on it for years now. The chairman is the town planner, so the planning aspect of it is already represented. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion?
Can I offer discussion?
Certainly.
Can I make a motion? The reason I made this motion is because this is the biggest financial issue facing our town right now, you're talking five hundred million dollars. And right now, the neighborhoods aren't really being represented in the process. If you have a sewer commissioner, one from each of the five precincts, then each of the five areas in town will be represented. And some of our discussion and looking into this shows there's about two dozen neighborhoods that are actually, could have small wastewater treatment districts formed, and then do membrane bioreactors, and do a much more, less costly technology to address the sewer needs of the town, rather than doing townwide sewer, which would cost five hundred million dollars. If it's done on a local level, it'll not only cost a lot less, but the environmental impact will actually be a lot less harmful, because membrane bioreactors filter out the water, so it comes out as pure as drinking water at the end of the process. Then it could be recycled for irrigation, or whatever other purposes. But, once again, I think we need to have all those neighborhoods represented on the Sewer Commission, so by having each of the precincts represented, each neighborhood will have somebody there who can bring them the information. And I think it will increase the citizen participation in the whole process. You know, no offense, but we haven't really gotten too much done on the, you know, otherwise, on any issue. Especially renewable energy, but I won't go there tonight.
No offense taken. Mr. Cahalan.
Peter, you're evidently not aware of it, the Sewer Commission exists now, already has an advisory committee with a representative from each of the five districts.
Right, but the sewer commissioners themselves, where are they from?
They're also advisory.
Right, so this way, each precinct would have their own sewer commissioner that could go back to their neighborhoods and keep them plugged into what's going on.
I think we're getting a change in charters now.
Well, the charter has discouraged citizen participation, too, which we should discuss at some town meeting, but that's another discussion as well.
All right, any other discussion? All right, the first vote that we're taking is, first vote that we're taking is whether to amend or not, not on the amendment, but whether to amend. So, all those in favor of amending Article 9, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, defeated. Now, we're back to the original motion that was made and seconded. Any discussion on Article 9 as originally moved and seconded?
I'm sorry, what, Mr. White? Could we get a hand count on that, please?
Are you asking for a hand count?
Yes, sir.
You may have one. Let's go back to whether or not to amend Article 9. All those in favor of the purpose to amend, raise your cards. How many counters? We got four? Okay, put up your cards, not to amend. Not to amend. This is not to amend. You're raising your cards. Who's in charge of counting the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen? Who's in charge of counting the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen? Debbie. Who counts up here? They get them? They got them. They got you guys. Okay, the amendment is on the table. The vote is 123 to amend to 92. Okay, any discussion now on the actual amendment? Which again is to appoint one commissioner from the five residential precincts and the other two by the selectmen. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
We'll do it fairly. Let's raise the cards for those in favor of the amendment.
Thinking for the amended article now?
You are. This is for the amended article. All right, all those opposed to the amendment? All right, the motion as amended passes 130 to 89. Okay. Article 10. See if the town will vote to reauthorize the Waco Bay MEP account. Will take any other action related there too. Mr. Richardson.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to reauthorize the Waco Bay MEP account.
Motion been made and seconded, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article 10? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 10 as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 11. See if the town will vote to transfer the use of and authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey to Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership LLP an easement for stormwater discharge, retention and drainage purposes in and over a portion of the layout of Nathan S. Ellis Highway, said easement area containing 3,800 square feet, more or less, and shown as easement E on a plan entitled "Easement Plan of Land", Nathan Ellis Highway and 64 Steeple Street, Mashpee, Mass., dated August 27, 2009, on file with the Office of the Town Clerk. And to authorize the selectmen to execute any documents or instruments necessary to effect said easement upon such terms as they deem to be in the best interest of the town or take any other action related there too. Mr. Myers.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the use of and authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey to Mashpee Commons Limited Partnership LLP an easement for stormwater discharge, retention and drainage purposes in and over a portion of the layout of Nathan S. Ellis Highway, said easement area containing 3,800 square feet, more or less, and shown as easement E on a plan entitled "Easement Plan of Land", Nathan Ellis Highway and 64 Steeple Street, Mashpee, Massachusetts, dated August 27, 2009, on file with the Office of the Town Clerk and to authorize the selectmen to execute any documents or instruments necessary to effect said easement upon such terms as they deem to be in the best interest of the town.
Motion been made and seconded, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article 11? Seeing none, I need a two-thirds vote on Article 11. All those in favor of Article 11 as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes by two-thirds vote. Article 12. See if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending Section 174-4 by deleting the listing of 1C Overlay District, amending Section 174-24H by replacing the phrase within the 1C Overlay District in a first sentence with the phrase "within said zones" and by deleting the 1C Overlay District from the zoning map or take any other action related there too. Mrs. Cook.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article 12 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating there too.
Motion been made and seconded, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval by a vote of five with one abstention and the opinion of the member who abstained was that it's overregulation.
Okay, and the ZBA, Zoning Board of Appeals, strike that, the Planning Board met and the Planning Board recommendations at their October 7, 2009 meeting was that they voted five to zero to recommend approval of Article 12. Any discussion on Article 12? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 12 as moved, I need a two-thirds vote, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 13, see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by amending subsection 174-24H by adding the following uses to subsection H1, B14, B18, B20, F2, F5, and I13. Amending subsection 174-25B, 18 of the Table of Use Regulations to add the phrase "dance or gymnastics studios, skating rinks, indoor go-kart facilities", after the term "health clubs". And by amending subsection 174-25113 of the Table of Use Regulations to read "temporary sales of Christmas trees, provided the sale shall not be conducted before Thanksgiving or after December 31, and all trees, signs and temporary structures shall be set back a minimum 40 feet from all streets and shall be recovered within 10 days after the close of sale or take any other, yeah, action related there too." I for one would not buy a Christmas tree after December 31st. Mr. Kay Haley.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article 13 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating there too.
Do I have a second? Motion been made and seconded, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval by a vote of five with one abstention. The reason for the abstention was overregulation.
Okay. Want to know where the skating rinks are and the go-kart facilities. The Planning Board had a recommendation of, on its October 7 meeting and they voted five to zero to recommend approval of Article 13. Any discussion on Article 13? Seeing none, I need a two-thirds vote on this article. All those in favor of Article 13, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Motion been made and seconded, dispense with the reading of Article 14. I will take a motion by Selectman Taylor.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article 14 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating there too.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded regarding Article 14, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval by a vote of six to zero.
At its meeting on October 7, 2009, the Planning Board voted five to nothing to recommend approval of Article 14. Discussion on Article 14? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 14, I need a two-thirds vote, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 15. See if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by adding the following new subsection 174-25D6 to the Table of Use Regulation and indicating by the letters PR under the I-1 column of said table that is proposed use is allowed by right, subject to approval by the Plan Review Committee under the provisions of subsection 174-24B in the I-1 Industrial Zoning District. Six, renewable alternate energy research and development, R&amp;D facilities, provided that no hazardous materials are stored in quantities greater than permitted by other sections of this bylaw, subject to approval by the Plan Review Committee and Design Review Committee or take any other action related there too. Mr. Richardson.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article 15 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating there too.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval by a vote of four with two abstentions and the rationale for the abstentions is unclear why the article goes around the existing protocol.
The Planning Board at its October 7, 2009 meeting voted five to nothing to recommend approval of Article 15. Discussion on Article 15? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 15, I need a two-thirds vote, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Article 16. See if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by adding the following new subsection 174-25H12 to the Table of Use Regulations and indicating by the letters PR under the I-1 column of said table that this proposed use is allowed by right, subject to approval by the Plan Review Committee under the provisions subsection 174-24B and the I-1 Industrial Zoning District. Number 12, ground-mounted solar photovoltaic systems, including but not limited to systems of 250 kilowatt or above, provided neighboring properties are effectively protected from any significant adverse impacts from glare, that any such systems are properly fenced or otherwise secured and that no hazardous materials are stored in quantities greater than permitted by other sections of this bylaw, subject to the approval of Plan Review Committee and Design Review Committee or take any other action related there too. Mr. Myers.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article 16 as printed in the warrant with the exception of the phrase or take any other action relating there too.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval by a vote of four with two abstentions. The same rationale from the people abstaining. It's unclear why the article goes around existing protocol.
Article 16 was reviewed at the meeting of the Planning Board on October 7 and they voted five to zero to recommend approval of Article 16. Discussion on Article 16? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 16 as moved, I need two-thirds vote, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, I move the dispense with the reading of Article 17.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. This is a petition article, is the petitioner here for Article 17. Yes, ma'am, please give your name and address and.
My name is Melissa Shay, 185 Asshument Road.
Do you have a motion?
I'm new at this, so I guess you can walk me through it. I move to put in pit bull regulations in the town of Mashpee.
Okay, you want to move the article as printed in the warrant?
Yes, I do. With an amendment.
Wait, wait, you got to move it first. So do I have a motion, you're moving it, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, now you want to amend it?
Something was written in the Cape Cod Times on Sunday that states that if you own more than one, should this pass, you have to euthanize any more of your dogs. That was not the intent. When I put this forward, I was told that it would, if this should pass, it would pass as of now and would not be retroactive and you would be able to keep your dogs. You just cannot replace them as they pass.
Okay. But that's not an amendment. You're just making a comment?
Okay, then it's a clarification.
Okay, that's fine. Do we have discussion on this article? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Michelle Storm, 66, Bog River Bend. I urge the community to reject this. Not only am I a pit bull owner, I'm a dog trainer and this is my service dog. And it not only affects those of us that own pit bulls as pets, but those of us that use them to become active members in society. I urge the community, if they are interested in, you know, public protection, which I completely understand, that we look at all dangerous dogs, not just by the breed.
Yes, sir.
Dennis Belzerini, 176 Whippoorwill Circle. I'd like to know why we just pick out one breed. I mean, if dogs are dangerous, say all dogs, not just one breed. I, I think it's, it's going too far and I'd like to see it stop.
Mr. Harsh.
My name is David Harsh from 16 Sunset Strip here. And I have two letters I'd like to read you tonight. One is from the American Kennel Club and one is from the Massachusetts Federation of Dog Clubs. And the one from the American Kennel Club, I'll save it till later if my motion does not pass, but the gist of it is the American Kennel Club is extremely concerned about a proposed ordinance that would mandate the sterilization in possible euthanasia of pit bulls in Mashpee, regardless of whether there's been a problem or danger in the community. We urge you to reject this proposal and instead consider other animal control policies. I'll save that for later. Right now, I would like to move that we indefinitely postpone this article. In support of that, in support of that, I'd like to read you a short letter that was written from a group closer to home. It's the Massachusetts Federation of Dog Clubs and Responsible Dog Owners, which have been working with the Cape Cod Kennel Club to ask you to oppose this article, which would severely restrict the ownership of a particular type of dog known as a pit bull. As you know, this has been placed on town meeting warrant by a citizen petition and the selectmen and FENC are both unanimously opposed. Closer to home, she has a quote from Cheryl Malone, who's the ACO for the town of Dennis for the past 23 years and an active member of the Animal Control Officers Association. This year, she was an Animal Control Officer of the Year by the National ACO Association. Her position and that of the ACO Association of Massachusetts, representing over 300 ACOs in this state, is that experience has proven time and again that basing restrictions on dog breed type or appearance is ineffective and unenforceable in the real world. Now, when looking to write new laws, one must be sure their real issue exists that's not already addressed by the existing law and the proposed law is effective, enforceable and equitable in its approach to the concern. I don't think there's anyone who'll disagree that dog bites are serious and all reasonable measures should be taken by lawmakers to protect their constituents from such dangers. We agree that strong, dangerous dog laws are needed, but feel the approach needs to be refined. All dogs can bite and all dogs can reside with owners who do not control their dogs in a responsible manner. If you agree with these two simple premises, the conclusion one must draw is that a law needs to be drafted that applies equally to all dogs that display any signs of being dangerous, as well as all dog owners who do not act responsible. Seeingly out of particular breed or in this case, the type of dog, there's little to address the real issues of dangerous dogs. We have worked with many communities in Massachusetts to help them achieve the goal of effective behavior based upon dangerous dog laws and we extend an offer to assist Mashpee as well. So therefore, I would move to indefinitely postpone this article.
All right, well, hold on. Going back to the petitioners, do you have any interest in going back and looking at other breeds and coming back next May with a new article with the pit bulls and other breeds? You don't have to, just.
I make a motion, we, we vote on the issue now.
Let me hear from the petitioner.
Carmen Shay from 185 Asshument Road also, one of the petitioners. Basically, this came about, as everybody probably knows, relative to a kennel that was approved within two hundred, a little over 200 feet from Heritage Park, which is a park where it. which is a park where sometimes during the summer, more than four hundred children play. When it went through the Plan, Plan Review Committee, basically what we were told is that the reason they could not deny such a kennel in such a proximity to a public playground in an area where it could possibly have impact to, you know, endanger to children, is for lack of regulation. We basically researched to try to see what laws were in effect, and this one came up as one that had already been approved by Attorney General in the town of Canton, and at this point is not been challenged, and we believe that this is a law that will not ban pit bulls, but will regulate them such that essentially they'll not pose a threat to, you know, essentially neighborhoods, and you're not going to have kennels that are going to pop up all over town regardless of where you live with pit bull kennels. And essentially, we think that it's one of those things that it's, it's the first kennel of its type that did come up, and there was significant concern, and we felt that from the lack of regulation, this is something that would remedy that.
Okay. Well, there's a motion to indefinitely postpone, do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Motion been made, okay, now, discussion on indefinitely postponing Article seventeen.
I, I don't want to see this postponed, I want to end it now. Let's take a vote right now, we have enough people here to take a vote, and I, I move we take a vote.
All right, well, right now, we have a motion which has been made and seconded to indefinitely postpone it. Any other discussion on that?
I'm going to butter to the Mendez and Mr. Lopes.
Which, you got to give your name and address, please.
Joseph Galant, two fifteen Asshument Road.
Thank you.
I've never been questioned on this as an abutter, I kind of wonder why, but years ago, I used to train dobermans for the state police in Connecticut. A dog of any breed will do exactly what it's taught to do. More importantly, a dog of any breed that is caged all day long is a dog that is a menace to its owners and its neighbors. The dogs of these owners, to my knowledge, have never caused any problems in the four years between their residence in Plymouth and Mashpee, except one July fourth barking incident. When I was given the information that they were bringing these dogs into the neighborhood, my first question to Mr. Mendez was, to the dog, Mr. Lopes, I'm sorry, was do the dogs bark? That was my main concern. My second concern was do the dogs bite? He answered no to both those questions. I read a very sensationalized article in the Cape Cod Times, and basically that's all it was, was sensationalism. I went to the source, and I believe that the dogs that are moving into this neighborhood are pets, they're not trained killers, they don't lock their jaws as a lot of people think, or would be led to believe they do. They're pets, and I understand a lot of other people in this town own pet pit bulls and would be put at an extreme disadvantage should this law be passed. That's basically all I want to say.
Got to go over here, and then we're going to vote on the indefinitely postponement. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Jackie Peckham, I'm from Plymouth, Mass. I know I'm not from this town, but...
Well, you have to ask permission to speak if you're...
Who do I ask permission?
Well, you ask me, and then I'll make a vote.
Can I speak, please?
All those in favor of letting this young lady from Plymouth, Mass. speak, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
You get to speak briefly.
Thank you. I'm a pet groomer in Wareham, I've been a pet groomer for twenty years, I deal with all breeds of dogs. They all can be bad, they all can be good, they all are what they are. They're all how we take care of them, it's all how our responsibility as pet owners to keep these dogs confined if they're a problem. I've had more problems with Maltese and Yorkies biting me, biting me in the face, and I'm an experienced person with dogs, and I find myself to take care with these things. I had a petition signed, I got fifty names signed to ban the banning of these breeds, it's ridiculous. And, and I even got a few women to sign who don't like pit bulls at all, and, but they see how I care for my dog, and they see that I take responsibility in how I care for my dog, and they were willing to go beyond what they believe and sign my petition anyways. And I am, I know I'm not from this town, but once, once one town passes a law, the next town owner over will pass a law, they'll see what they're doing, and they'll, they'll take from what they're doing. It happened all over Rhode Island, the whole, almost the whole city, town, state of Rhode Island is banned from pit bulls right now. And do you think that they're still not in the towns? Do you, do you think that they're still not there? And these are the people that you don't want having these dogs, owning these dogs illegally and not caring for them at all. What do you think they're doing with them? That's where we get Michael Vick and all of that. I mean, it's just, we just need to take more responsibility, and people need to be more aware of these dogs. They're really good dogs, I, you know, there are some bad, there are some good, but there's bad and good in everything in all breeds.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, what you're voting on is the motion that's before you, which has been seconded, is to indefinitely postpone Article seventeen. So those in favor of indefinitely postponing this article, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay. We're back to the original motion, and any further discussion on Article seventeen?
Move the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, all right. All those in favor of moving the question, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Yeah, moving the question, this means we're going to end the discussion, so let's try it again, I need a two-thirds vote, to ending the discussion and voting on this article. All those in favor of ending the discussion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? There we go. All right. Now, you're voting on Article seventeen as moved by the petitioners. All those in favor of Article seventeen? Mr. Shea? I'm sorry? We're voting, okay. All those in favor of Article seventeen as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It's defeated. Article eighteen, see if the town will vote to authorize and empower the Board of Selectmen to prepare a plan laying out and defining Bayshore Drive and Brookside Circle, and to accomplish said purpose, and for expenses incidental and related thereto, the town vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds for appropriation, five thousand dollars to the Bayshore Brookside Roadway account, or take any other action related thereto. Yes, sir.
Petitioner Paul Kujer, eighty-six Bayshore Drive. I move that the town vote to authorize and empower the Board of Selectmen to prepare a plan laying out and defining Bayshore Drive, Brookside Circle, and to accomplish said purpose for the expenses incidental related thereto. The town to vote to transfer five thousand dollars from the Meadowbrook Roads Engineering account to Bayshore slash Brookside Roadways account.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, and everybody's going to miss the raffle after the meeting. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval by a vote of six to zero.
Finance Committee approves, any discussion on Article eighteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article eighteen as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article nineteen, see if the town will vote to authorize and empower the Board of Selectmen to prepare a plan laying out and defining Sunset Strip, Noisy Hole Road, Willan Road, Clawleys Road, and to accomplish said purpose, and for expenses incidental and related thereto, town vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds for appropriation, five thousand dollars to Sunset Strip, Noisy Hole Road, Willan Road, Clawleys Road account, or take any other action related thereto. Yes, ma'am?
Barbara Butler, eighty, Willan Road. I move the town vote to authorize and empower the Board of Selectmen to prepare a plan laying out and defining Sunset Strip, Noisy Hole Road, Willan Road, Clawleys Road, and to accomplish said purpose, and for expenses incidental and related thereto, the town vote to transfer five thousand dollars from the Meadowbrook Road Engineering account to the Sunset Strip Roadways account.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article nineteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article nineteen as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous.
Jerry, move to dispense with the reading, Article twenty.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, do I have a motion? Understood, Mr. Terry might be making a motion?
No.
Oh, twenty, I'm sorry. Who's the petitioner for Article twenty? Yes, ma'am.
Mary Sue Aldrin, seven Forest Drive. I move the article. As, as written without...
Did you move it like this, I move the town vote to accept the layout as a public way of Forest Drive as shown on a plan entitled "Easement Taking and Layout Plan of Forest Drive in Mashpee, Massachusetts, Barnstable County, dated October ninth, two thousand and eight, prepared by Eagle Surveying Inc., which layout shall have been filed in the office of the Town Clerk not later than seven days prior to the date of the vote hereunder, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain, taking any land necessary for the purposes of such ways as so laid out, one hundred and sixty-four thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars to the Forest Drive Roadways account, and to raise said appropriation to treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, be authorized to borrow at one time and from time to time under and pursuant to Chapter forty-four, Section seven or eight, or any other enabling authority for such purchase or taking and layout, including cost of constructing, such ways and legal financing and other costs incidental and related thereto, and further authorize the Board of Selectmen to assess betterments to the owners of the lands abutting the ways. Is that the motion?
That's it, thank you.
Okay.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval by a vote of six to zero.
And at the meeting of September sixteenth, two thousand and nine, the Planning Board voted five to zero to recommend approval of Article twenty, accepting the layout of Forest Drive as a public way. Discussion on Article twenty. Need a two-thirds vote, all those in favor of Article twenty as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous.
Mr. Moderator, move to dispense with the reading, Article twenty-one.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Now, Mr. Terry, how are you?
Mr. Moderator, Richard Terry, Punk on Point, move to indefinitely postpone Article twenty-one.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, discussions on indefinitely postponing Article twenty-one. Seeing none, all those in favor of indefinitely postponing Article twenty-one, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Indefinitely postponed, take a motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
Do we have discussion on twenty-one? Still waiting.